Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the November 5th Committee Commissioners Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of public record. Anyone wishing to comment, please use the raised hand function at the bottom of your screen. If the chairman allows, we will bring you.
Okay, thank you, Dawn. Good morning, all. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners Meeting for November 5th. We will start, as is customary, with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. And ask everyone to rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. All right, Dawn, if... Get our main screen back.
Something happened to my screen. What happened to it? It went small.
Can you share the screen?
Yeah, we're fine. We can go on to public comment, or we can't really...
There it goes.
There we go.
Any hands raised for public comments? We do have one, I see.
HC.
Dawn, it's like to bring HC in. We'll... See what that is. Please unmute yourself and identify yourself. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Hal Conkey, and I'm a journalist for Lebanon Daily News. I had questions with updates on the mask-up Lebanon campaign. I know the deadline passed on the first for businesses, and I also know that apparently, I was just updated that you spent almost like $800,000 on the mask-up campaign recently. We're going to approve that, or they're planning to approve that. How much money is left over, and how exactly is that money being spent at this point? Because I know that I personally have seen, of course, ads all over the place, and then I know one of the other goals was to keep it local, keep it that local county businesses were making these signs and doing this advertising. Have you found success with that? And could you provide more details about that?
Jamie, do you want to take it? You're closest to it.
Sure. The... Your reference to the $800,000, there is a list of expenditures to be paid from cares for the mask-up campaign today, included in this meeting. I'll get to that toward the end of the meeting and ask for approval on the invoices. My estimation is that the campaign is up to about probably 1.1 to 1.2 million so far. The signs, the mask-up signs that have been offered to businesses and organizations to display really took off. And that was an idea from the beginning to see if it started off, I think, with, you know, is there any way that the fire companies or others could display something and be compensated for their space and so on? And that really snowballed in a good way, and a lot of businesses and organizations were able to take advantage of that while at the same time accomplishing the goal of, you know, furthering the message. And if you, in fact, I was somewhere at the intersection of City Lebanon yesterday, and as I sat at the light, looked around, like there were three within sight of where I was, you know, just sitting at the traffic light. So that's been by far the biggest component, the biggest expense of the campaign. There have also been media buys, which many have seen. It's playing on some television, it's playing on some radio, there are billboards out and about, and there was a direct mail campaign, which I think most are aware of, where there was a flyer and a mask sent to 55,000 households throughout the county. And, you know, as to the local, the local usage for vendors, I would say that that is, with the exception of the sourcing of the masks or the production of the masks that were sent out by direct mail, all of the rest of the campaign was done by utilizing county businesses and county organizations. For example, that particular direct mail campaign, you know, the design was done locally, the printing was done locally, the insertion of the mask was done by an organization locally. I think that particular component of the... Five different businesses in Lebanon County that were able to be a part of that. So, yes, I think it's been a big success in terms of utilizing Lebanon County businesses and organizations to do so. All of the production for the commercials, there's a, there's an animation, there's a cartoon that was created for daycare and young children and young elementary classes and so on. And there's a firm, Mount Breton, that does animation, so they were tapped to do that. So we really, for me personally, I'm really impressed and surprised and pleased at how many businesses in Lebanon County were able to be a part of this, you know, many of which I personally weren't aware existed. It's really been, it's really been nice in that regard. So I don't know if that answers all of your questions on it, but I hope that's a good overview.
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess there's just one follow-up question. What, do you know the name of that, of that animation from Mount Breton? Because that sounds interesting in and of itself.
I don't off the top of my head, but it's not hard to find.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can provide that to you if you want to follow up.
Okay, we do have another raised hand. Edward Lynch. Okay, do you want to unmute? There you go.
Yes, I just wanted to commend Michael Anderson, his staff, and the volunteers who assisted on election debt. I thought they did an outstanding job, and they should be commended for the work. Thank you.
You're breathing up a little bit. Maybe that's all I wanted to say. Okay.
All right. I think we all went in with those sentiments, knowing what led up to the work of that team in Michael's office, working seven days a week in preparation. And really, I thought staffing was strong with volunteers in the counting process and dealing with all that mail, which was unprecedented numbers for Lebanon County. I thought they did everything as well as could have been done in a very timely fashion, very professionally. So, you know, Michael, you can't say enough for Mike and his team under his leadership.
Absolutely.
Encouraged.
All right. I don't see any raised hands, so we'll go on to the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our previous meeting as presented, and if no corrections or additions or deletions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oh, same sign, so moved. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Mrs. Nguyen with her treasurer's report.
Okay, we, we had receipts of $173,013.50. That brought us to a total cash of $1,639,294.37. Expenditures this week were $1,122,280.63. And the undistributed tax claim is $52,042.93. So that leaves us a balance of $464,970.81.
Make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
And I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Treasurer Nguyen's report. Any comment or question? Are any none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved. And Sally, you have one other item?
Yes. This is for Sue Douglas. We need a resolution giving her the authority to sign at Wells Fargo, and it's for the... Oh, shoot.
The prepaid burial resolution?
Yes, that's it. That's what I was looking for. It's, there's money was put away for some of their consumers, and the bank now needs this resolution or something for her to sign for them. So that needs to be approved. Did you want this read?
Is your consumers for the, for the...
M H I D.
M H I D, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, is it necessary to have it read? Any...
I know it's not long, but I don't think the public knows what that means, so it wouldn't hurt.
Want me to read through it, Sally?
You want to read through it? Okay.
Be resolved that the Lebanon County Commissioners do hereby designate Susan Douglas Director of Fiscal Operations as the official to execute all documents and agreements between Lebanon County M H I D E I program and Wells Fargo Bank to authorize payments for prepaid burials. I Commissioner Joel Letts duly qualified Secretary to Lebanon County Commissioners, Lebanon PA, hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and correct copy of a resolution duly adopted by majority vote of the Lebanon County Board of Commissioners at a regular meeting held November 5th, 2020, and said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of Lebanon County Board of Commissioners remaining effective this date.
Make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second to approve this resolution as read. Comments? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
Okay, thank you. I just have one other question. Did you just get that record improvement request?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
I didn't understand the question. I apologize.
I had sent up a record improvement request for some money out of the record improvement fund.
Was that recently, Sally?
Yeah, it was, I think, late on Friday I did it.
I'll have to look. I don't remember that. I've been in computation for elections, so...
Yeah, I had emailed it up, I think. So I did hear back from one of the committee members. The others I have to get back to, but we'll need to put that in our meeting, maybe the next meeting if possible, to put it through the meeting.
All right, Sally. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We'll move on to our HR report with Ms. Idris.
Morning.
Morning.
Under resignations and terminations, Rose Marie Urban, caseworker two, retirement effective January 1st, 2021. Taylor Delisle, Secretary D, resignation effective October 30th. Chelsea Rice, docket specialist, termination effective November 4th. Clint Son, full-time correctional officer, resignation effective November 1st. Amber Mayberry, full-time correctional officer, resignation effective October 28th. Denise Clay, DJ Office Manager at MBJ Garvers, retirement effective December 25th. Trudy Seifert, full-time LPN, retirement effective December 19th. And Darlene Becker, part-time housekeeper, retirement effective December 24th.
I make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those resignations and retirements, and with noting the longevity of several of those employees. It's incredible how they've been with the county, and we thank them for their service. Anything else to add to that motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, so moved. Thank you.
Moving on to changes of status, transfers, and promotions. Brian Bray changes status from jury attendant in the courts department to court officer at the rate of $495.82 bi-weekly effective November 30th.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Brian Bray.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that change of status. Any question regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
Under other transactions, I have the following five new hires at the prison, all full-time correctional officers, all at the rate of $15.45 per hour, and all effective November 9th, and that is Aaron Ayala, Tyler Horst, Tyra Reer, Madison Bouter, and Brandon Lees. President Judge Toawak would like to rehire Heather Wenrick as a clerk typist A at the rate of $855.87 bi-weekly effective November 9th.
Make a motion to approve those hirings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions or comments? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Michael DiPaolo, longevity detective sergeant, a one-time payment of $2,478.72 effective November 19th. Kevin Farmer, longevity, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of $1,250 effective November 19th. Anthony Hornberger, longevity payment corporal at the prison, one-time payment of $2,000 effective December 3rd. And Chris Mailer, longevity payment Lance Corporal at the prison, one-time payment of $1,000 effective December 3rd.
I'll make a motion to pay those longevity payments.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the salary board transactions. Any further comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oh, same sign, so moved. Okay, thank you, Michelle.
I'm actually going to read the conference seminar. There's only one.
All right, okay.
All right. So moving on to conference seminar, requested mandated Daniel Seaman and Carl Stumpf from Assessment would like to attend the AAP recertification training. This is online. This would be November 23rd and 24th, a total registration fee of $280 worth nine credits and mandated by the Department of State.
Make a motion to approve the conference attendance for the folks in Board of Assessment?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that mandated conference. Any additional comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oh, same sign, so moved. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we have, here he is, John Shot.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, John.
Yourself, and then you may proceed.
Okay, I don't see if I figure out how to get my face up on the screen here. I'm not sure. Again, you can hear me, but I can't somehow or other...
It's all right, you're coming in loud and clear.
Am I okay?
Yep, go ahead.
All right, well, thank you very much, Chairman Phillips. I appreciate it. Good morning, everyone. I'm participating in this morning's meeting to request your authorization to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for additional federal funding for the law enforcement to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. As you recall, a few months ago, you gave us the go-ahead to submit an application for the first round of COVID funding, and PCCD approved that grant application in the amount of seven, excuse me, $74,630. To date, we have expended $51,164.91 of that funding, and we have received a quarterly payment from PCCD of $37,251.87. That represents the July through September fiscal quarter. Now, under the allocation formula devised by PCCD, our county is eligible to apply for an additional $43,364 to be used by Cjab departments and local police forces for pandemic-related expenses incurred as far back as March 1st. And this is for a 24-month period ending February 28th, 2022. The document that I dropped off the other day is a working draft. The deadline is November 10th, so between then and now, we'll be updating numbers and narratives as departments submit their funding requests. In fact, since I dropped off the package the other day, we have received over 15,000 in new funding requests to add to the modified budget. So I thank you for considering this request, apply for this additional funding by the November 10th deadline.
Make a motion to approve, apply, an application for additional funding of $43,364 to be used for Cjab and the local police.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we apply for that additional funding that'll carry through till February 2, 2022.
Correct, yeah.
Yep, any additional comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved. Anything else, John?
No, that's it. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We'll continue to work on this.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
We're just a couple of minutes ahead of schedule, but if Carol Davies is available, we can pull her in. Yes. All right, Carol, you're up if you'd like to unmute. There she is.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just as you came to me, my computer decided to restart, so sorry if there was a brief delay there. I'm glad to be with you here today. I'm Carol Davies. I'm the administrator of the Area Agency on Aging, and I'm here today to request approval of our four-year plan. Every four years, we develop a four-year plan to comply with both state and federal regulation, and the plan gives us some broad guidelines to follow to make sure that our programs continue to be in accordance with the goals set by both the state and federal governments. The process began actually back in February, and that was interrupted slightly by COVID, but the process included a review of demographics in our county, a review of other local conditions. We also reviewed the results of several different needs assessments that were done in the county. And as a result of that, or with all that information, we developed some very broad goals and objectives. The goals actually are pretty much in accordance with the state goals, which is what was required. And then as we developed the individual objectives and strategies, those were much more local in flavor, taking into account the actual things we found out here in the community. And the state also asked us to develop performance measures to go with each of these goals so they can measure our progress over the next four years in meeting the goals. We did have a public hearing that was attended by about 20 people. We held that last week. We've also received approval from the state for the plan, and so the final piece of the four-year planning process is to receive approval from the county commissioners.
All right, I would, having sat in on the showing of that to the public, the public hearing, I would make a motion for the county commissioners to approve and adopt the four-year plan for Area Agency on Aging.
I also sat in on the plan, Carol. Thank you. Job well done. I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Carol, anything additional before we vote?
No, I think it's a good plan, and I think, I think it gives us some good tangible things to work towards.
Excellent. All right, thank you. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right. You have your plan. Thank you. Mr. Dowd is...
Bob.
Yep, I'm here.
You go? All right, that's right on time or a little early, but Bob, if you'd like to introduce yourself, and then you may proceed with your comments.
My name is Bob Dowd. I am the Director of the Department of Emergency Services, and I have two items this morning for the commissioners to take action on. The first is to accept the annual Task Force Homeland Security Grant in the amount of This is the grant that all nine counties go together on to fund the task force and the task force initiatives.
I'll make a motion to accept the $1,331,961 grant for the Homeland Security Task Force.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, any comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved.
The next item I have is an asset the commissioners designate, take action on a designation of agent resolution. This is a standardized resolution that allows me to execute all the forms associated with public assistance in reference specifically to COVID-19. What we're trying to do here is get public assistance, federal money to come down to reimburse us for expenses that we put out for mitigation of the pandemic.
I'll make a motion to give that designation to Director Dowd.
I'll make a second to that motion. Bob, could you send us a copy of that? I don't think I got anything outlining that. If I did, I don't remember it.
Yes.
Okay, Jamie, how, okay, so I'll get to see it when I come in then. Okay. Thank you.
Should have been in your stack of things. It's just a single-page form, doesn't it?
Unless it stuck to something, I don't see it, Jamie. Thank you.
Okay, well, with that all covered, if there's anything else, or if there's nothing else, we'll go proceed with the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved. Thank you, Rob. Bob, do you want to talk about anything else? The certification, recertification?
Actually, yes. The hazmat team, I'm glad you reminded me. The hazmat team just passed its recertification, which is a four-year requirement, and they passed it with flying colors. It was a phenomenal exercise, excellent certification. I'm not aware of any, anything negative at all about it. So that's, that's a, an excellent achievement for the team and the team's members. They worked very hard to get to that point. It's very, very proud of what they've been able to accomplish in the last four years.
Congratulations. And Bob, may I ask you about the testing site? Would you like to review that? We got the results yesterday.
Sure. The final numbers fall in line with the approximate percent of positivity that we're seeing countywide in general. Nothing out of line with the testing site. I don't have the email up in front of me, but I will get it. The testing site ran for a full week.
It was roughly 900, a little under, with about 9%, I think.
Yeah, they were...
I thought the breakdown of the different age groups was very enlightening, and like one of four and smaller children, which is 25%, but there was only one. But then you get into the teens and the young adults, those numbers are pretty high.
Yeah, total of 900 tests performed over the week long, and it was a drive-up, no appointments, no questions asked. Basically, you walked in or drove in and gave me information, you got a test. There was, the majority of the tests were done on people between the age of 25 and 64. The majority of the positives were between the ages of 25 and 49. So there were a total of 267 tests in that 25 to 49 age group, and 26 of those came back positive. Overall, out of 908 tests, there were 86 positives, so that's, that's just under that 10%, which is what we're seeing. Pretty much all of their testing in the county.
Good mortality rate.
And mortality rate, it's still low, very low, which is a good thing. I don't really know why, to be honest with you, other than the fact our treatments have gotten better. The demand on the health system is really the important metric that we're watching. I think that things would change significantly if we ever got to that point where we did overload the health system, so we need to be careful, and we need to, to manage, manage flow and volume into those facilities, but mortality rate is still low.
We were unfortunately lost two citizens this last week, but still overall it's low, but every life is, has value, and our condolences to the families of those who lost loved ones through... our condolences to the families of those who lost loved ones through COVID.
Anything else, Bob?
I don't have anything else.
Alright, well, thank you for everything and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, next we have a resolution regarding the Lebanon System Library System Board. Michelle Hawke, oh, there's Michelle's, there's Michelle. Just gotta say, Michelle's in, in the attendee audience here. If we need to get any explanation or definition of any of this, I'll just kind of queue it up. I think Mike Battistelli is also in the audience, but that's just as a member of this system board. But anyhow, this resolution before you is essentially a memorialization or a formalization of the function of the Lebanon Library Lebanon System Board, which is a creation of the county originally from nineteen sixty-eight. Believe it was created by resolution. At that time, the primary function was the, for the pass-through of state funds being handed down to Lebanon County and, and needed to, to pass through somewhere. So this, that was created, and it has evolved. And over the last couple of years, they have been sort of hammering out some agreements and arrangements between Lebanon System Library, Lebanon System Board, and the Lebanon Library Board, and the overall gosh, it's escaping me. Michelle, if you want to unmute, jump in here, but the the third board.
Yeah, so there are six individual libraries working together through the system, and we've just been hammering things out, trying to make sure we're organized properly, get an EIN, and this is one step toward.
So, so this also establishes some parameters of how the system board will function, which, which may never have been put into this kind of a document. It also aligns us with preferences of the State Department of Education, Office of Commonwealth Libraries, who I had been in contact with back and forth over. This is probably two, two years now, or more maybe, that we've been kind of working toward this. And so thi- this would establish that it's a seven-person board. There shall be at least a one county commissioner or a member of the county administration to be seated on this board. The other six will be representatives, representatives of each member library. That's not changing. Very, there's not a whole lot that's changing. Really just sort of, again, I keep using the word memorializes, but the, puts this into.
Jamie, could I interrupt? I apologize. About an hour before this meeting, I realized that the document I had sent to you still had the old numbers from the code. Did you get the new one from me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. Okay, I'll let you go.
Ninety-three fifty-one and ninety-three forty-three B. Does that sound right, Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
And, and so this will continue the pass-through of the funds. The library board and the system library have worked out an agreement between each other, and this just really kind of brings this all together and puts an updated resolution on the county's books so that there aren't any, you know, sort of loose ends that, or loopholes, or, or dangling anything really to to cause any disagreements from here forward. So, Michelle, is there anything you want to add to, to that that I have, may have missed?
No, I don't think so. Thank you.
If that's the case, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution eleven-five twenty-twenty-B.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this resolution for the library system. Any additional comment or question? Hearing none all.
Congratulations is the big thing, because that's a long time coming.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. So moved. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
The last thing on your agenda is Board of Elections, but I've got a number of things here to just wrap up your commissioner meeting with, if I could. The first is, I've got two applications for county liquid fuel aid for your consideration. The first one being for West Cornwall Township, and they intend to use their allocation for street sweeping expenses. That cost is two thousand four hundred thirty-two fifty, and their allocation that they would like to put toward that is one thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars. And also North Anvil Township would like to use their allocation toward their line painting project in North Anvil Township. That project is a cost of eleven thousand six hundred seventeen dollars, and they would apply their two thousand three hundred eighty-one dollar county grant toward that.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the liquid fuels grants for the two municipalities as requested.
Second that motion.
Here we motion to approve liquid fuels distribution for West Cornwall and North Anvil Townships. Any comment or question regarding that motion? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. So ordered.
Jane, I have exemption requests for disabled veterans exemption from real estate tax. There are three of them. Robert Count, East Maple Street, Lebanon, Henry Jocavino of East Chestnut Street, Jonestown, and Edward Root of Cloverfield Drive, Lebanon.
It's my pleasure to make a motion to approve real estate tax exemption for one hundred percent disabled veterans, as presented by Jamie.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the property tax exemption requests. Any further comment? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Post same sign. So moved.
Okay, I've got a new appointment and a reappointment for the Lebanon County Commission for Women. The new appointment would, they're recommending Jennifer Pensinger for membership to the commission, then they would, that would be effective at the November eleventh meeting. There was a resume provided and pending your approval. She would then serve a term to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Also recommending the reappointment of Jody Lazorcheck to serve a second term that would end on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And Beth Wise and Gina Baylor have both decided not to seek a second term on the commission, so their terms will simply expire.
Make a motion to approve those two appointments to the Board of the Women's Commission.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the additional Jennifer Pensinger and re-upping of Jody Lazorcheck. We thank Beth Wise and Gina Baylor for their service to the Commission for Women. Any other comments or notes to make? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. So moved.
Alright, the next items that I have are relating to the cares funds. The first one, and this was something that you had contemplated over the last at your last meeting or, or at a workshop. I'm remembering the date, but anyhow, this would be a consulting agreement that the Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation would be entering with, well, the county would be entering, because the county's grant is, is administering the grant of, for cares, but this would be with Fourth Economy. And they're actually partnering up with, actually the two entities that they talked about and had entertained are going to partner up on this, but Fourth Economy is the lead. Therefore, the consulting agreement is being provided by them, and this would be, this would be for the conduct, conducting a a study to see what the business community would need to do to rebound in, in some cases from COVID. So it's a, it's sort of a before, during, and after type of study. This would happen between now and the end of this year, which is the deadline for the expenditure of the the cares funds. And if you approve this today, then I have on the list of expenditures for the cares funds, which is my next item, then the first deposit on, on this consultant agreement of forty-eight thousand dollars, and then the rest will be paid according to a schedule over the next, over the next couple of months, as the study progresses. I believe their intent is to get this kicked off next week. Susan Everly of the EDC has been working with her Forward Together Lebanon team to get this going, and I think is going to also tap a few more people as a steering, for a steering committee. And, you know, other than what's already been covered, I think, in your workshop when Susan presented, then I'll just be asking for your approval on this consulting agreement.
Jamie, and my understanding of the entire contract is that it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
Correct.
And I was wondering, is that final? There was some discussion about other items. That's all-inclusive, is that correct? Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the Fourth Economy contract with the Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation and the County of Lebanon in order to cover expenses of a long-term recovery program because of COVID nineteen.
Oh, I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we enter into this agreement under the cares funding. Any questions or any other amplification needed? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed.
Aye.
It's been moved on a two-to-one vote, in the affirmative. And oh, that's it.
Okay, and then the last item I have is a list that's been provided to you of cares expenditures. A long list, most of which are for the mask campaign. They are they're identified by their amounts, and the total list comes up to seven hundred ninety-seven thousand one seventy-nine thirty-nine for this round of expenditures or invoices that have come in since, since your last meeting. And the last, I'll just tell you, the last report that I submitted to DCED, which must be at the end of each month, I submitted one on Thursday. We were up to, as of the close of October, we were up to about five point eight million dollars in expenditures of the cares funds of the twelve point eight million cares funds. In my conversation with the ED, DCED auditors, and that, at that time, we're, we're on pace and very comparable to other counties. I think he mentioned one county that's up, has spent seventy-five percent of their funds. But the majority of that has been the cares business grants that you approved back in mid-October, and those have been dispersed. So the entities have all gotten their information to us, resolved any, any, you know, problems with paperwork or anything like that, and I want to thank Dawn here in our office and in the controller's office. I think I may have done that before, but they've got a tremendous amount of work in creating each of those entities as a vendor. Each of those businesses is a new vendor in our system, but those have all gone. That's a big part of that, and as you know, there's a second round of those grants. That window closed on Friday, so the review committee, the review panel is looking over those applications now, and will have recommendations to you next week for the remainder of those funds, which at this point is going to be somewhere around between three and three and a half million. I'm still trying to sort out how much the demand has been for municipal reimbursements, and, and if there's fund, there's funding left over in that category, we'll slide that over to the care business grants, so that we don't leave anything on the table for the grants. Anyhow, but before you today, the invoices were the expenses incurred since the last so seven ninety-seven one seventy-nine thirty-nine. If you have any questions on any of those, I'll try to answer them.
I'm getting a lot of background noise.
Might be over at voter.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Um, I do have a question, Jamie. For clarification, you said five point eight million dollars expended in cares. Is the one point two million for the mask-up campaign on top of that, or included in the five point eight?
Some of it in the five point eight if it was incurred in October. So the, the report, the five point eight that I submitted to, to DCED in terms of the monthly report was anything you had approved up to October thirtieth, or that had been paid up to October thirty. So certainly there were some mask-up campaign expenditures that were approved in September and October. But I don't, you know, what portion of that one point two I don't have in front of me. And there's, you know, probably the, the, most of it is, is going to be in here. I would say we're at about, you know, on, on this list that I provided to you for today, probably seven hundred thousand of that seven ninety-seven is, is mask-up campaign. The other is, as you could see on there, some of it is, is economic development and the Fourth Economy that we just talked about, the Fourth Economy agreement, and some of it we also have in here. For the first time, we have some mental health and substance abuse reimbursements for providers, PPE, so, but.
Thank you. Would you kindly maybe share a copy with the commissioners, or at least with me if they're not interested, of the DCED report, so I can get a handle on what that looks like?
Yeah, it's, it's a simple, I'm happy to do that, but it's a simple one-page, just how much was spent in each.
A couple of numbers. Okay. Alright, glad to be helpful. Thank you.
Sorry, was that a motion?
I, I, it's not my turn to make a motion.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Ames?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the spending as outlined.
I'll second the motion, and I will acknowledge how Conte's request for a copy as well of the report Jamie's going to provide.
It's part of the motion?
Sure.
I mean, we're just approving the, the expenditures, what.
Yes.
And Mister Chairman, if I could, before the vote.
Yes, Bill.
I, I just want to clarify that I voted against the, the study, but I will vote to cover the funding because a majority of the commissioners approved that. So it's my obligation as a member of this board to approve, to pay the bills that we've been obligated to.
Appreciate that, Bill. Thank you. Alright, it's been moved and seconded that we pay this expenditure. Any further comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. So moved.
Okay, and I think that's everything I have. There is a hand raised.
That's how he was asking for the copy, unless there's more.
Well, he, he asked.
It's in the comment.
He asked for one in the chat, but he also has his hand raised.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, no, I, I have, I have a bit more. So, um, so do, first of all, I guess, do you know when you'll be able to get that to me? And I'll provide my email. I'll provide my, I'll put my email on the chat right now.
Yeah, I can do it this morning easily.
Thank you very much. And secondly, um, you mentioned, Bill, and you, and you've mentioned in the past that, uh, you have, that you were initially opposed to the way that the mask-up campaign, or just the idea of having this campaign as a way of, uh, spreading, um, information. I believe that was something reported previously about that being like a way that you'd prefer, you prefer there'd be other things instead of that, in terms of like, you don't think the government should tell us how to spend them, should tell us how to spend the money? The county? Do you still believe that, or do you think that the campaign has been a success now that you're now in favor of?
First of all, I'm not, I'm not in a position to measure the success. Noticed that the numbers seem to be going up, so basing it on that, and I'm certainly, that's certainly isn't a scientific method, I don't think, and we're always encouraged to follow the science, but based on that, I wouldn't deem it a success, but I honestly think it's ridiculous to spend that kind of money when there are people that are applying for grants and are not going to be getting them. In addition to that, no, I don't think it's the state government and particularly the governor's job to dictate how the folks in Lebanon County spend the money that has been granted to us by the federal government. Does that answer your question?
May I have a rebuttal on that?
You don't need to rebut it, Commissioner. The man asked me a question and I gave my opinion.
I, Commissioner Litz, do you need to say something?
I would like, yes, I would. I would like to say that everyone in this campaign, whether it's for CARES or the mask-up campaign, has done a stellar job, above board, and we are making progress. I think that if everyone, in everyone's hands is the power to wear a mask, wear it properly, keep it clean, and together, if everyone does that, we can defeat this virus and keep it at bay until we actually get vaccines that come out that can immunize us against this dreadful and deadly disease. We must stay positive. We must set the tone. We must show leadership and cooperate with those who are providing the funds. And you know what? That mask campaign is infusing all kinds of cash into local businesses. Those businesses are getting a hand up, not a handout. I think that has to be the message. It's the money still coming to Lebanon County and we are helping our local businesses with that money. Even if you look at the expenditures today, you will see that mental health businesses are getting money from the CARES funding. This is a win-win for us. We are very fortunate to be getting this money and I think we should be grateful. And that's my comment. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
I think, I, I think we certainly are fortunate to get this money. This money has been granted to us by the federal government and I stand by my position that I do not think the governor had the right to intervene and determine how we spend the money. I am grateful, Commissioner Litz, that this money is going to local vendors, but I still think it would have been better spent giving the money to businesses that actually need this grant money to keep their doors open rather than giving, and I'm grateful that, that the businesses here in the county are providing most of the services for the mask-up campaign. I think we both, I, excuse me?
They're providing jobs, so that's important.
Wait, just let Commissioner Ames finish his thought, please.
I thought he asked me to clarify.
I think we both have the same good ends in mind, Commissioner Litz. I think we're both looking for the same results. And that is to have the residents and the businesses of Lebanon County benefit. Where we disagree is on how that, how we're going about that and the direction that it's going. So other than that, I'm fine.
Anything else?
And I did, and I did vote to spend the money for things for which I disagree. And if you recall back when we did the nursing home and so on, you voted no against everything after that, that the two other commissioners had authorized. So I'm just trying to, to step us up a bit from that.
I believed in being, I still believe in being consistent with my vote, sir.
Okay, very good.
All right. Did that answer your question for the gentleman from the Daily News? Are we finished? I guess we are. All right. So we'll ask for adjournment of our meeting and then, Bill, you can convene your election board.
Thank you.
Can we adjourn? Okay.
Second?
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance. And now we'll turn it over to Commissioner Ames as chairman of the election board.
Yes, I would like to open the meeting for the Board of Elections. And our director, Michael Anderson, who we've already given praise, but I want to continue to do that. Not just Michael, but his entire staff and League of Volunteers that watching them over the whole course of this election through Election Day and yesterday. Performance and, and the job was just outstanding. So we certainly want to thank you for that, Michael.
You're on mute, Michael.
Thank you, Commissioner. Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk, Voter Registration. Appreciate those words and second all of the fine people that made that possible. Very, came together very well. So that was, that was wonderful. So I appreciate you having me on here at last minute as we keep going through, as I like to call it, the election that never ends. That may end eventually. So what I'd like to do is talk a little about what the board would like to do as far as our plans for continuing to canvas and, and count and computate ballots. I just wanted to update you on a few numbers that we were able to get this morning. I did not have yesterday. Just so everybody's aware, I know the board is, we do have all ballots counted that have been received via the mail. So absentee mail-in ballots that were received as of 8:00 PM on Election Day have been counted on, are in our totals. And of course, all Election Day votes are also in, in the results, unofficial results that we have for Lebanon County. So outstanding work by all of our poll workers here and at all of our 60 precincts to make that happen. A couple, what we have outstanding, I guess, is what a lot of people like to know right now. So right now, we have about 300, just under 300 ballots that need to be counted from the military and overseas voters. We have roughly, and I apologize because the number I may have given you is severely off, but we have roughly 1,500 1-5-0-0 provisional ballots that we need to address. So that was high, far, far higher than I was under the impression of yesterday. So I apologize for that. And the big number, I think a lot of people also want to know is how many ballots have you received that were postmarked by November 3rd that were received in my office as of yesterday? And that number was 46, 46 ballots. So far, far fewer number than we anticipated, which is, which is actually good news. We have not gotten the mail today yet to, to be able to tell you anymore on that. I did read the guidance from the Department of State on what to do with the ballots that were returned to us with the postmark of November 3rd or previous, but received after 8:00 PM. And their guidance at this point is to hold them. Do not pre-canvas, canvas or count them, just to hold them, keep them segregated. So that was the main reason why I wanted to, to talk to the board is because I didn't get a chance to read this until this morning. But that is their guidance on those ballots. I recommend that we adhere by that and just hold those, count them, segregate them. They want us to do a little bit of extra work as far as how they come in, when they come in, and we'll take care of all that in our end. But I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. And I don't know if that's something you want to vote on to officially approve my recommendation and their recommendation to hold those at this point until we get further guidance. But that is, that is what I think we should do with those, those ballots.
If we could, I would like a motion from one of the members of the board to adhere to the Secretary of State's recommendation on handling those ballots. That puts us on record.
Please, so I can understand the vote.
Sure.
Are we voting on the 46 ballots that came in yesterday after November 3rd but postmarked by November 3rd? And then anything that comes in as well today and tomorrow or just yesterday?
No, I think anything that will come in through the duration, through Friday.
So 46 plus whatever comes in today and tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, that, that whole segregation of ballots is what I'm asking. My recommendation is to adhere by what he had said, the Secretary of State's plan to just keep those segregated, do not canvas, pre-canvas or count those ballots until we get further instructions from the department.
Don't touch them at all. Okay.
Yep.
Now I totally understand. I wanted to make sure I wasn't confused. I want to make a motion to hold untouched the ballots that come in November 4th, 5th and 6th as a proposed by our voter registrar, Michael Anderson, and also recommended by the Department of State Secretary, Catherine Bookbar.
Do I have a second?
Well, I have a, I'll make a second with a comment or a question that may, you know, direct me to my vote. But I understand that there's a suit now filed asking us to hold those. And which is what we're doing, but we're not doing it as a result of that suit, but more so as a result of the direction from the Department of State. My question is, this may not be the last word on, on this. We would follow whatever the outcome of that suit is, is that would, I would ask our solicitor, is that in line with the proper thinking?
Yeah, I believe we'll continue to follow the guidance of the Department of State in part, and then obviously any court orders that are issued. And those court orders, you know, may go through various state and/or federal, the whole way up to the US Supreme Court. So that might take some period of time, but yes, for this time, we'll just kind of wait and stay and, and follow any court orders that may be issued in the future.
All right. Very good. Under those guidelines, understanding, I'll second the motion and you may.
Commissioner, can I actually add one thing that I just thought of? So I don't want to pre-canvas, I don't want to count. But one of the things I would like to be able to do, if the board gives me permission, is to be able, so with the 1,500 provisional ballots we have, it's very possible that we have a provisional ballot that's affected because somebody didn't think their vote was going to get here on time. And that vote could be one of those that comes in during this period of time. I would just like permission to be able to at least look at those ballots to see if we can match it all, not move them, touch them, put them together, but at least be able to say, you know, look to see if any of those ballots are affected by any provisionals that we have. So that way, we're not holding up our provisional ballot process because right now, all we're doing is holding all of those ballots that have been issued by a provisional that says that they never received their mail because I have to wait until all mail ballots are processed. I can't process them, but I could at least see the names and maybe move from there. Is that?
So, Michael, I kind of have a question before I amend my motion then.
Yep.
If there is a provisional ballot and the name and address on that matches one on, one of the ones that came in the mail after November 3rd, which one would we be counting eventually in full? Would we automatically go to the provisional and accept that and then, boy, the one that came in the mail wait?
The, the process has always been mail over, the mail-in is always taken over a provisional. That's always how it's been. So, but I think that will be something that we'll all have to discuss and maybe Dave will have to be involved in that as well. Of what we want to do. But at this point, I don't need that decision to be made. I just need to be able to identify them. And I don't want to break any rules by looking through these ballots if the board's saying, just collect them, put them in a, put them in a safe location and don't canvass them. I'm just trying to think of how we can process these 1,500 provisional ballots faster so we can allow people to know if their votes are going to count or not. Because all, all we would do is if we have a provisional that matches something that came in in the mail, we would just put that off to the side. But if we don't have a match, we know that it's something that we can research to be able to start getting ready to present to you next week.
Okay. So your proposal is to put, put aside anything that matches the names?
Just so we can, I just, my proposal is to, can I at least look at them to be able to match, to hold it off?
But I'm trying to figure out, the provisional ballot will be not opened if we see that there is one that came in the mail.
Provisional ballots are never opened unless they're part of a board meeting. So that's all stuff we'll do next week. We're just talking about what our process is here and I just don't want, and maybe this is more of a question for Dave, if, you know, he wants to chime in here, but I want to be able to look at them to see what comes in, to see if I have a match. And if I do, then I know I can continue to, to process others where I don't have a match. Does that make sense?
I have a question. If I can do it. When you, could you define look at them? Because you're talking about this basing on if there's a return address on the envelope because, well, again, we're all preparing the day here, but if you are talking about looking at them by opening them and seeing.
No. Yeah, sorry. That should be very specific. When I say look at it, just looking at the envelope, seeing the name, looking at the provisional ballots, seeing the same name, putting that off to the side that no, so we know when we're ready to present them to you, we know we have two here. And then the board later can make a determination of what we're going to do. But that helps us in processing all 1,500. Otherwise, if I can't go through them, I'm going to have to pull every provisional ballot that has to do with mail and not being received off to the side before, until I get a chance to look at those ballots separately.
I think the question for, for Dave might be, does that process constitute pre-canvassing?
Yes.
Under this, you know.
Yeah.
State funded.
I'm not comfortable amending my second.
Okay.
I mean, unless Dave, but I'd rather we don't touch them.
Yeah, I, I understand the practical nature of what Mike is suggesting and I would say under normal circumstances, that would, that's what I would do as well. But just given the nature of litigation here.
I agree.
Even though it's going to potentially sound like cause us more work basically and more time later, if, if court decisions are made in various ways, I think that's what we have to do at, at this time is just follow the, the, the motion that was already made effectively.
Okay. And then later on, wait for further guidance or see how things play out before we, we act on them. So so the motion stands to essentially to direct Michael to follow the Secretary of State's guidelines in handling these.
And that's, and that's to only process ballots and, I mean, hold the ballots that were received November 4th, 5th and 6th.
Right. They're not to be processed at all. Exactly. Just hold. Secure and hold. All right. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Did you want to, did you want to answer, have questions from the press? There's two press questions before we vote in case they impact the outcome of the vote? Laura LeBeau and Hal from the Daily News.
I suppose. I don't know how. A question. I thought we voted a question from the press. A question from the press is never going to change my mind on how I vote.
And that's not what you said the other week.
Okay. All right. Entertain questions.
Hi, this is Laura. Michael, you said there are 300 overseas and military ballots. There's a, there's a later deadline for those to be received and, and those, those can be opened and counted, you know, toward the various different elections, correct?
Correct. And actually I have a, after this gets resolved, I have a, a plan or a request on those, Laura. So stay, stay tuned.
Okay. Thank you.
And Hal is the other one.
Is it relevant to this motion?
Yes, it is. So just to clarify, just to make absolutely sure, what, what you want to do, Michael, is that you would like to look at the provisional ballots? And then you would like to look at the addresses on the, these particular mail ballots which were received when exactly? And then just, and this would obviously not be considered a final count. This would just be more of considered like, because I mean, there could be ballots with mislabeled addresses or something like that. I'm not sure if that would clear, would count like as a, as an official vote, kind of.
Right. So the decision was that we will not pre-canvas or canvas or, or, or basically look at those that are coming in from yesterday, today or tomorrow that have a postmarked of November 3rd or earlier or no postmark at all. Those are just being held and we're not going to look at them at all. As far as my original request was, you know, can we somehow look at them to help in another process and that, we are not going to do that. So they're just being held.
And for sake of clarification, since the postmark was mentioned, most of these ballots have no postmark because they were prepaid postage. So, but we have been directed So, but we have been directed by the court, I think, to, to, if, if and when at the time we consider these, to consider all of them. So.
And I, I will not to disagree with you, but I can tell you that the, the post, the post offices are marking those. They have been very diligent. I've talked to probably four different postmasters that they are stamping them when they, when they process them. Even though they technically did not have to, because like you said, postage is paid.
All right, we, I, I guess we didn't really vote because I guess Commissioner Litz didn't vote because she was talking. So all those in favor of the motion as stated indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. That motion carries. Michael, do you have anything else?
Yes, so I, I do have a plan. So we'll see how you feel about this. But so one of the things that we can do, if you would like, and this is my recommendation, is we could address the military and overseas ballots sooner. We would not have to necessarily wait till next week at our computation meeting. We could address those as early as tomorrow if the board's available. And basically what that means is we would, similar to what we did in the primary, is, is open those ballots and recreate them so that they can be scanned. So as you recall, we use the ballot marking device. We, we, my staff went through them, made the ballot into a scannable ballot, and then we presented both ballots to the board to approve. If they approve, then we scan them. So one of the things that I am requesting is that we could help save time by possibly doing some of that work tomorrow. Since we have the room available, we have the scanners available, we have the opener available, if the board so chooses. If not, we can wait and do all of that as part of our computation meeting. But keeping in mind, we have 1,500 provisional ballots to go through. And we also have, you know, all of the other activities, write-ins, things like that, that we need to do at that meeting next week. So just something that I thought if the board wanted to, we could, and then also obviously get those, those votes out. And any military, as Laura had said, any military or overseas ballot that gets here by close of business on Fri-, excuse me, Tuesday, November 10th, would still be addressed then at that computation meeting, which at this point, looks like it's going to be Thursday, November 12th.
Yeah, well, I'm in favor of doing it tomorrow, but I'll leave it up to my colleagues.
Would Michael work with our schedules? Because I didn't know you were going to propose this and I don't know my schedule for tomorrow. Can you be flexible in the hours if we all check our schedules after the meeting?
Yeah, I, I mean, I prefer to do it at like 9:00 in the morning if possible, but I guess when the board is available. And, and, you know, we can kind of go from there.
Commissioner Phillips, your availability?
Absolutely, but I, I did have a question. Is there anything else that we could be doing in terms of process with the provisionals? I mean, if we're going to be in tomorrow for the 300, is there anything that we can do to get a head start?
Absolutely. I mean, I, I think we could be open to any ones that we can process today and have prepared for you tomorrow. We can, we can absolutely look at those as well. I mean, it won't be all of them, but we could put a dent in them if the board's willing to do that. I think that would be, yeah, and then we could also process those as well while we're there.
Well, 9:00 works for me and Commissioner Litz wants to reach out to you and, and let you know whether that works for her.
Um, there's a hand raised to a mat too. I don't know who it is.
Are we understanding about the meeting at 9:00 AM? That, let's resolve that first.
I would like to have a meeting tomorrow. I just wanted to have the courtesy of checking my schedule since I didn't know about it.
That's what Commissioner Ames was saying, and I didn't know if you heard that with the comment about the hand raised. Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll take the raised hand.
Hello, thank you. It's Matthew Urban. I had a question regarding the un-prosable ballots that Michael mentioned. When they are counted, how are they added to the tabulation total? Are they added to the precinct total or is there a separate total? Like, are you keeping track of where they came from?
I, I apologize. I'm not understanding the first part of your question. What ballots are referring to?
The ones that were not possible, that the scanner couldn't read them because of a defect in the ballot.
Oh, and, and so, okay, I'm understanding the ballots. Now, what is the question again? I apologize.
So when they're, when they are tabulated, are they going to be added from the precinct they came from? Or are they be tabulated in a separate column?
They will be tabulated into the precinct that they come from.
Thank you.
Yes. And so, and we can, that's actually something we also could address tomorrow as we have about, I think, 15 to 20 ballots that could not scan, which is amazing considering we did 22,000 plus ballots in the last two days. I think we had 15, 20 that couldn't scan. So we can address those as well at that meeting tomorrow. The only thing I would suggest, Commissioner, is that if we, we would probably need to somehow in this meeting announce when the next one is. And then if it does not work, I guess we would have to somehow then still convene, like I'd say at 9:00 tomorrow, and then change the time, just because I think we need to have that as a public forum when we're going to meet next to continue computation.
No, I, I agree with that. As Commissioner Phillips and I can make it at 9:00, we can convene then. If we have to change the time to suit Commissioner Litz's schedule, we can, we can announce it at that time. But I think it's agreed that the meeting will occur tomorrow. Does that work?
Works for me.
Okay, so with that said, the Board of Elections will convene tomorrow. That's November the 5th at 9:00 AM in Room 306, is it?
That is correct.
And hopefully, we'll have our meeting at that time if all three members of the board are present. If, if Commissioner Litz is unable to do it at 9:00, we will announce the time. Obviously, it will be later in the day at that time.
May I just ask, though, how many people are we disrupting if we, if they show up? Michael, are you going to have a team there or what was your thought?
Yeah, so mostly going to be my staff. We're reaching out to a few people after this meeting just to see if they're kind of had the availability of the day. So, you know.
It would really be nice to resolve it right now.
Sooner than later would be nice, yes.
Because of the public's being on board here with the meeting, is, or excuse me, Bill, may I just ask another question?
Sure.
Is your, is your calendar handy that you could just take a look and come back to us right now or?
It is not.
Okay, okay. All right. All right.
Well, hopefully, we'll be able to have the meeting at 9:00 rather than inconvenience Michael and all of his volunteers and employees.
I just respectfully ask that if we are going to set up any more meetings to ask the commissioners before the meeting, that way we can check our schedules.
I would love to be able to accommodate that. Go with the flow here. That's all I can tell you. Sometimes that's all we can do.
And, and it's, the meeting, according to Laura, is November 6th. Today is the 5th.
All right, I stand corrected on that. That's, that's true. Today is the 5th. So it is November 6th. So for clarification, the Board of Elections will convene at 9:00 AM Friday, November the 6th.
Which is tomorrow, right, though?
Which is tomorrow, yes. And I did have the date wrong. I'm sorry.
May I just ask, are you finished with your presentation, Michael?
I am finished. Thank you.
Commissioner Ames, I have another question.
Sure.
Review the computation schedule, just for the folks that are on, make sure we're all on the same page on that for next week.
I'm sorry, you talking to me or the commissioner?
I'm talking to you, Mike.
Sure.
Determine that.
Sorry. So at this point, I have that we're going to meet tomorrow, November 6th at 9:00 AM in Room 306. And then the next meeting that we can talk about when we're in the meeting tomorrow, but I'm looking at is we have to have our official computation meeting, which is where we go through all the results and such in the provisional ballots. I'm looking at Thursday, November 12th, possibly also at 9:00 AM in Room 306 to try to get us to a conclusion. But that all depends, obviously, on what we're able and not able to do with those ballots. But at least we can continue our process from there.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that.
Yep. And, and one more thing, if you don't mind. We're getting a lot of calls and questions about people wanting to know why the statewide system is not showing that their vote was counted. They voted on Election Day. Their vote has indeed counted. The system is not going to show that their vote is counted until we process all of our, our poll books. That is one of the last things that we do when we do our reconciliation at the end. So just throwing it that out there for people, if you voted in person, your vote absolutely did count. If you're checking the website to show that your vote counted as far as we processed that you voted that day, that will occur, probably getting closer to the end of the month by the time that's going to happen because there's a lot of different things that need to happen first with that. So I did want to let people know that. One of the big questions we're getting today, never had.
I've been getting that question too. Thank you for addressing that.
I never had that one before. That was, that was very interesting.
Yeah, people are on the ball. They're really engaged.
Yeah, so mainly that site is being used for people to track their mail-in ballots that we had received it. But obviously, it can be used for people voting in person, but that update, obviously, we have paper poll books. We have to go through all of those manually. That, that takes a while. So, so later.
Okay, anything else?
Commissioner Ames?
Yes.
Dan Sedelnik that has a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
I have to unmute Dan.
Thank you. This has been very informative. I'm just curious, and you can't disclose this at this point, but besides the unscannable ballots to be recreated, do you have a number for the number of what they call naked ballots that were received that are put aside at this point? Or is that something that has to be discussed later?
I, I don't have a number. If the board would like, though, we can count those today and have that ready for tomorrow.
It's fine.
Yeah, I like, I'm mildly curious because we talked about it back on the 26th of October and I'd like to know what the impact would be if they were, if they were closed properly or cured. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anything else? Anyone? All right, seeing none, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Hands is back up. Okay. Oh, he's gone. Okay.
He was waving goodbye.
Bye, Dan.
All right, with that said, we're adjourned. We'll reconvene tomorrow at 9:00 to see where we go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else, Jamie?
Good. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No, I thought we.
We adjourned.
Yeah, we had already done that.
That was the election board.
We adjourned the other meeting before the election.
Yes, that, that was already done.